Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting tonight. We'll do a roll call.
Leslie? Here. Beagle?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Junior?
Here.
Isaac?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Keeper?
Here. Let's see, for the record, we'll need to find out who else is online. You have the staff already, who's on the staff?
Barry, Glen, me, Karen, Marta, Rick.
And so you know everybody up there, so. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to our city council meeting. Thank you for joining online. At this time, we're going to go right into our action items, which is resolution 1-2021, Cres III resolution. So, city manager Karen Pettigrew, please.
In your package, you will find the resolution for the, in the matter to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the sponsors of the Columbia River Enterprise Zone 3 and the City of Boardman. Oh, am I not speaking loud enough? Do you want me to do it over again?
Uh, no, I think we got it.
Okay.
So this is where we are, uh, is this an agreement with you?
This is the, pardon me, this is the intergovernmental agreement that we, the City of Boardman will have with the Cres III board. So that if our community is, um, in the influence of where a project would be cited, then we would be able to be at the table for the decision-making.
And this what this agreement does?
Yes, and there's a map attached
I saw that map.
To the back of the agreement that shows what Boardman's influence area is and what arrogance and then Ione, Lexington, and Hepner. And I, if you notice, Boardman's, uh, influence does not go all the way to Tower Road and does not include the property that we also own on Tower Road. So, uh, if there's something cited out there, then the City of Boardman would have to depend on the port and the county to, uh, look after our best interest there.
Did they give a reason on why it didn't encompass all the, all of the boundaries of Boardman?
No.
Is that the, is, would you say that that is consistent with other cities? That?
I think that's consistent with this agreement. It, it was discussed numerous times over the months that we dealt with this. And I ju- just, just for your information, I think, on the, if you turn to the yellow map that's behind that one, that shows the, the influence of the City of Boardman, and the inset that's there, you will see, if you go to the, if you can tell where the off ramps would be at the City of Boardman.
Right.
There's two or three little, uh, yellow squares of property on there, and those are the hotel designations. Because we thought perhaps if hotels were ever going to come, that would be where they would be cited. And hotels under a Cres as, under an enterprise zone, you have, you have a three-year standard exemption.
What are these, uh, these empty spots in the big yellow that, what are those spots?
They, they're, they're not industrial.
Oh.
So they're, they, whatever they are, they're considered that they would never be, there wouldn't be something cited there.
Gotcha. They could change it to industrial though if they so choose?
And yes, and that's the other thing, you can move, because if, if you notice, and I'm not good at maps, but I think the little square out on your very left
Yes.
Of your map is probably Three Mile Farms, you, you can move, uh, these designations, because there's more, there's more property than we have designated.
Gotcha.
We can use.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Beagle, what is this down here, south of the town?
I don't know. And it may not have anything on it. You know, there's property that we have, you know, it's like the big yellow one.
You're talking this one that's right there?
At the bottom?
No.
At the bottom.
Oh, this.
The one in south of. It's a pretty substantial.
Oh, well.
Oh, that's the same.
Yes.
That's the same one.
That's the, yes, that is, that's the same one is up, up on the middle of the map in the
That's not.
It's just a blown up version of it?
And I still don't remember what it is. It's either, but it must be something that we think, that they thought somebody would want to cite on.
Gotcha.
Or has cited on. You know, I'm wondering if that's the tree farm? If that would have been the mill?
Was it all the way over there?
Straight south of us?
Huh?
They're not, they were more east of us.
Oh.
Southeast of us, this is almost directly.
I'm just trying to figure out what that intersection is.
Okay, I can't guess.
Full line or? But anyway, that's, that, that, that block right there is the old tree.
Actually, I bet that is the mill, the one up here on the, this one right here.
Yeah.
I bet that is the mill.
Blown up portion.
From the tree farm, I think so.
Oh, it's, it's split over, okay, because that, the mill site was under an original.
Right, right, okay, I, I thought that was straight south of us, but it, it's, okay, never mind.
So is there any other discussion, just for clarification of our boundaries?
So when you said that the designation of having, say, the yellow spot there at, what is this, Three Mile Canyon Farms or something? That that designation could be moved to another property, because we are eligible to have more property in our Cres agreement? Or the Cres agreement allows for us to move our designations from one entity to another?
There's more property in the, there's more property in the Cres, in the enterprise zone. So if they want, chose, they could move something to a different section.
They, the people on the board?
Yes.
So we have property, whether that would be to the west, I'm looking on Exhibit B, that, uh, our boundaries go farther west than what the red chose, is that correct?
Just a tiny bit.
Just a tiny bit?
Yes, but the tiny bit is the property we own on Tower Road.
Is that industrial property?
Yes. Well, it
Or is it?
Or is it farm?
So if we wanted to put something industrial out there, could we do that as a city?
Yes, we could probably change it to least, port industrial, a lot of that property out there by the airport is zone, uh, port industrial. And I, I can't remember if ours is or is not. But that's a matter.
But this agreement that we're signing would not stop us from building, uh, industry out on that property if we so chose?
No, but
What it does, so, so the, huh, because it's city property, city can, to build something out there, for what, it's not going to fall under the Cres III agreement for the circle of influence that is for the City of Boardman.
Right, it would be something separate than Cres, so if we wanted to do it, nobody's going to tell us whether or not we can, because it's in our city limits.
If, if it qualifies, it can, it, it would qualify to go under the, the port-county enterprise zone agreement.
So basically, the Cres board has said, you've got potential property out there that we don't want you to develop?
No, that's not quite how it went. The port, so the port tried to have the port property inside, uh, the enterprise zone, which included the City of Boardman's property. The county didn't, or would not come to an agreement with anybody else that, that those properties should be included in that circle of influence. So, um, that's, that's why it was changed.
Correct. But I guess if it's Boardman property, there would be no other influence than Boardman who wants to build something if we so chose?
We, we could, we can sell that property to someone to build something on it. We, as a city, cannot offer them an enterprise zone exemption. If they were to want to have an enterprise zone exemption, they would have to go to the port and the county to get that. So depending on how big a company would want to cite there, they're always, they're pretty much always after the enterprise zone.
Right.
Exemption, so we would have to depend on the county and the port to, to make that agreement, and we would not be at the table. And by not being at the table, we would not, so not receive funding from that. The only money we would ever get from that is the day we sell it.
Which seems interesting to me that somebody or an entity is very interested in a property that's out there, telling us what we can and can't do with it based on previous ventures that we've done, that's a little shady to me. Oh, we, you've got a piece of enterprise property out there, um, we're not going to let you do anything with it, because it all goes to you. That, that.
I don't, I don't know.
Whether that's, huh?
Well, Mr. Keeper, I was thinking that, um, if, if you sell your property and you go through everything correctly, and the purchaser wants to buy it, and they're going to build whatever they're going to build, and you are both in agreement on that, then you sign a paper, you sell your property, but if you were at the table for the enterprise zone, you'd have the, you'd have access to work out a, uh, not a deferment, but a, a reduced rate in taxes in lieu of other items, whatever those items are, maybe they're, I promise to help every Little League team, or I, whatever that company that's purchasing your land would like to do. But if we're not at the table, we can't negotiate for the City of Boardman to receive those benefits.
Correct. I just don't like an entity telling the City of Boardman what they can and cannot do on their property. That's the piece I don't like.
Well, I don't think that they're doing that, though, are they?
Well, they just, they put a little line there and says, hey, if you build it inside the red, you're, you can go to the meat at the table. But if it's a little chunk that's outside, uh, something might get built out there, but we're going to keep all that for us. And we get to decide how we're going to do that. That's the part I have a problem with.
I, I don't disagree, I just, I didn't understand.
Yeah, that, that's the part I have a problem with. I'm not saying it wasn't done, um, in bad faith, I just don't like an entity, I don't need to name the, the entity, but telling us what we can and can't do with our property, that's the only part I have. Because it's kind of
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? The, the property is currently, uh, we own it, it's in the county's jurisdiction for land use. A zone change would have to be done, and it'd have to be done through the county's planning department.
Okay, is that before?
Because it's outside over urban growth boundary.
Well, we could absorb it in our urban growth, couldn't we?
Uh, probably not.
Oh, because they, you'd have to have their permission to do that?
You'd have to have DLCD's permission, Department of Land Conservation and Development. And we'd have to make it contiguous with the city, uh, with the city urban growth boundary. And even then, the county would, if it's in the urban growth boundary, it would still be county jurisdiction for all land use.
Okay, even though we own it?
Even though we own it.
It's the same with your personal property, is it not? You own your personal property, but you're still bound by the laws for zoning and ordinances and all of the applicable city and county applications. So it wouldn't matter what piece of property you owned, it depends on who the entity, who controls the zoning and that.
I see it more as who controls, who gets the money, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, ultimately, that negotiation
Goes to the county, because they have all the power on that piece of property, and that's the piece, I guess that's what I'm irritated, or bugs me the most about this, is they wouldn't have excluded it if it wasn't an important piece in the future for them. That's where I'm coming from. Could be 10 years, it could be 20 years, that's the only, I think it's just, maybe I'm making an ad hoc model, but, uh.
It's like they're putting it in their back pocket for future use.
Maybe, I don't know.
And I do think this agreement expires in 25, which gives us a, an opportunity to maybe have it changed.
Gotcha.
You know, that's the positive thing.
All right, I just had my piece on it, um.
Is there any example, I'm sorry?
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Are there any examples of what the Cres, um, map looked like before?
Well, we also turning.
It's going to, it's going to encompass that, the, therefore property and city's property, the old agreement did.
So I don't know if there's a possibility to see that too?
Well, it doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't make any difference.
It just wrong.
It's a mute point.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm getting, I'm feeling, um, I'm just raising some questions. Because regardless, I think we need to pass this, uh, regardless, to be able to have, for the best interests of the City of Boardman, with this need, this, this, uh, this agreement needs to be passed. It needs, I mean, and, uh, for the, if we're going to look out for the best interests of our citizens on behalf, we'll get as, as many opportunities from the Cres board as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on
Yes.
The last whereas on the front page, page one, it, uh, mentions the Columbia River Enterprise Zone Manager, who is that?
Currently, it's Greg Sweek is who we hired to be the manager. Uh, before that, Carla Plane was the Enterprise Zone Manager.
Okay, well, that's one question answered. Under Cres III, there hasn't been anybody appointed to that position yet.
Yes, that's right, so.
So we're passing a resolution where we don't know who the manager is?
Well, it doesn't make any difference, you don't have any.
That's usually a, a, it's a paid position that is, uh, appointed by the Cres board. And is the board being convened? This resolution just got passed a few days ago. Okay, so there, there is no board yet. So Cres III has not been
Had a board established?
Each entity is going to have to, through, provide three people for the enterprise zone board. Once that, those pe- those, those entities are, are defined, those people are defined, then they will schedule a meeting with the enterprise zone. And most likely, that enterprise zone would ask Greg Sweek if he would continue doing it, because he's the most knowledgeable when it comes to enterprise zones. Uh, very, very, uh, many years of, of background when it comes to enterprise zone management. And when I, I, I would think that that board would want to rely on him, if he's willing to do it, he may, he may not, he's kind of retired, so, um, but we'll see.
And then it will be the, the goal of the, the Cres board, which would be the all, I guess that would be the all entities involved, I mean, that'd be Lexington. I mean, that would be Ione, Hepner, Boardman, Port of Morro, county that would probably need to decide on that?
So, no, so
No, okay.
Well, so the agreement's going to be between the city of, this agreement is going to be between the City of Boardman, the port, and the county. So each, each city's going to have to do their own, uh, circle of influence, their own IGA, um, and, uh, they will have to make those decisions when it comes to them.
No, I was thinking of choosing the zone manager, maybe I should have made that clear, uh, so when that, I, I, I guess, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
The port and the county will be the two that will hire the, the zone, the enterprise.
That's true, I would think that would be the most
I'm sure.
Best decision-makers as far as who they want to run the, be the, I guess, the zone manager, so.
So, I hate to beat a dead horse, but who's getting Tower Road as their circle of influence?
The county and the port.
The county and the port.
And it's not, it's, it's the
But it's not a city.
Anything outside, anything outside of those circles of influence is county and port.
Okay.
Only?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have another question.
Yes.
Observation, um, on page two, where it says enterprise zone staff, I noticed that they, uh, had the zone manager, county assessor, and legal counsel, but they did not mention the fiscal agent, did not the fiscal agent be included in this staff?
I think it's, it's on the next page, it's number four. And it says
Well, I, I understand the duties of it, that's why, you know, it's mentioned here, all the, the key components or key figures. I, I believe it should be added here, so that when you address it over here on item four, it's not a surprise to you. It's like when you use an acronym for a phrase, you use the phrase, then you put it in parentheses, the acronym, but then you can use the acronym from that moment forward. And, and that's why I'm thinking the fiscal agent should be added up here to I and B.
Okay.
It's semantical.
Where are you reading that first?
Right here, page two, zone, or enterprise zone staff, it, it mentions the enterprise zone manager, the county assessor, and legal counsel, but it does not say anything or identify the fiscal agent, yet over here, item number four, it says duties of the fiscal agent. So I'm thinking that maybe it was an oversight, but I believe the fiscal agent should be identified in B, because you list one, two, and three, zone managers, county assessor, legal counsel, and then over here does number four, fiscal agent, but it's not mentioned here.
I think you're just going to have to have that as a scripter's error.
That's what I'm thinking, it, it needs to be added there.
So are you saying they should be on the board?
No, I'm thinking that we're not going to go back, this has been signed, this agreement has been signed by the
County.
County and the port.
I, I see who it's, who's signed, but I'm just saying that I noticed that they list the duties for all those individuals, for those entities. And I said, okay, great, 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 and then I turned it over, and then the duties of fiscal agent, which was not mentioned, so I will, I will stop.
I think we probably maybe could let the minutes show that we had that, that was brought up, and then I'll call the other entities and to make, have them make a note that, um, that, um.
So the fiscal agent, you want that, so I see number four that says duties of fiscal agent.
Correct.
And you're saying, where should that be?
If you go back to the page before, item B, management of the board, item B, where it says enterprise zone staff.
Yes.
You list, the last sentence of that opening paragraph says
Oh, okay, you want, you think it should be, so it should be included in that?
Right, it should be after legal counsel, because if you look at the items, this one is for
Two, three.
Zone manager, duties of county assessor, legal counsel, number four is the fiscal agent.
So they need to amend, amend and put fiscal agent as in, um,
I believe so.
That would make sense.
Well, I think if you were going to split hairs here, and I'm not knowing, because I wasn't part of this, that where it says that, between the port of, more, the port and Morro County. Okay, the board will have the following staff as appointed by the Cres III IGA between the port and Morro County. Those are the ones that appointed these three people. I don't know if anybody has even discussed appointing the fiscal agent yet.
At this point, no, and, and I, I guess my concern would be is if we didn't define the duties of the fiscal agent, but it is defined. So, and it falls under B, so, um, I, I think, I think it's covered, I don't think you're going to have a legal obligation or, or not be able to appoint a fiscal agent.
Well, it's just an observation on my part.
Okay.
So you're saying that it, the fiscal agent definitions are there in case they add it later? So if they add a, if they add a staff member that was a fiscal agent, then that would, they're covered to be able to have a duty. It just wouldn't be in that paragraph of B? I got you.
I would like to see it in the last line.
Okay. Yes.
Is there any other discussion about the, the resolution 1-2021? If not hearing any more discussion or questions about it, do I have a, uh, person that would like to, uh? Yeah, make a motion, please.
This is Leslie, I would like to make a motion to pass resolution 1-2021 as presented.
I seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We don't have everybody here, we'll vote by roll call.
Leslie? Yes. Beagle?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior? Is he still on it? Junior?
The mute, yes, for some reason I couldn't unmute it, sorry.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Keeper?
Yes. So the motion passes, or the resolution passes, I should say. Uh, moving to other business, system development waivers.
Okay, do we want to discuss the waivers before we discuss the emails from Ed Glenn? Because the system development waivers should be a pretty lengthy discussion, you know, we told you we would bring the information to you, so that maybe by March you could make it a decision?
Yes, you did, um, okay. Yes, you did. Okay, I, I don't have, I didn't see it on the agenda, but I saw it in the packet. So we're talking about Ed Glenn, his emails?
Yes, well, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. So you're. The most recent one was from February 12th? Is that the one you wanted to discuss?
I thought.
Oh, excuse me, February 3rd.
Okay, he sent one on the third, the day after council last time.
Correct.
With the, some of what he had said on the, on, at our meeting about how we could make a motion to approve the, the minutes.
And then he sent one on the February the 5th talking about how our balance in the building fund.
That's the one I wanted to discuss.
Okay, yes.
I, I asked, and he said that he'd be happy to, you know, help you to spend it. And so I attached behind that. I had Glenn, our building official, wrote a memorandum about why that is a dedicated fund and we cannot spend it just any place we'd like. It has to stay in the building fund to be used for building fund necessities.
And I see that he documented where he found that in the ORS.
Oh, yes.
In the OARS.
Yes, this has been a longstanding conversation here in Boardman because we do have a lot of money now in the, in the, in that fund. I mean, there's, there's millions, six maybe of them. And so, but we can only spend it on building fund items. Or we, we have used it over the years. We, if we were short on a project that we wanted to do, we'll borrow from that fund.
Oh, and then pay it back.
And then write it up just as a loan. And usually though, they, well, who would know that all your other interests would get down to 1%? We used to write them for 1% because that was really a good interest rate. Now everybody gets less than that, so. I have to renegotiate that. But anyway. And so it makes it, it's a nice cushion for us to have. And as I wrote in my notes to you, we even tried to have the legislature change this a few years ago. And at that time, there was only two or three of the building officials, you know, cities that had programs that had a surplus. And so nobody else wanted to, to throw in with us. And so we couldn't get the, it changed because we were thinking, you know, if we had 10 years worth of what you thought maybe it would take to run the building department, that then maybe that would be good enough for the state, but there was no traction there. So. And I think Glenn's here. He was on there a minute ago. Can you show the little tiny things of everybody that's here or not?
I'm here.
Do you have any, did I talk, did I say it good enough for you?
Yeah, that was fine.
Glenn, that's when.
Somebody a question? No? So basically what I wrote in our last sentence or last paragraph is that the legislature wanted this to be a user paid. The building codes be paid by the people who use it and not have it funded by the general fund and have the taxpayers pay for it. And that was really the goal years ago in the seventies or eighties when this was all set up.
That means we could hire more staff in our building department then, correct? It's pretty, I mean, we have the money if we so needed to.
No, and there's.
We just did. We hired a plumbing inspector.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Well, and we, we could probably hire maybe somebody that was like in the building, you know, planning department or something like that. But I can't go out and build a swimming town because I want to. I can't pave the streets with it. Those are all dedicated funds. So. So anyway, I just wanted to address that before we moved on to a lengthy conversation.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about Mr. Glenn's concerns about the building fund carryover?
Oh, and you know, like with construction, Boardman has been really blessed because even in 08, when there was the downturn, we were still doing a lot of building care. But, you know, like say in the seventies and stuff, what was going on was communities or people would want to take on a building department. And then the minute there was no money, they wanted to give it back to the state. And the state had to hire inspectors again and come out and redo the program again. And the state said, no, we're not, we're done doing that. If you want to have, if you want to have a building official and have that program, then you're in it for the long haul. And so. That's.
It's probably not a bad thing to have a whole lot of money. Especially if you're an employee up there, you know, you're always going to get paid. So to me, that's probably a, a pretty nice job to have. So in a city that has a lot of money in that fund, just to say.
I think it helped when I was looking for a building official, but you knew he got that money to work for it.
Well, I mean, you could definitely tell people you've got some job security in Boardman.
Yep. Okay, now we can go to the system development.
Okay, we need to talk about the system development charges. We got through the resolution, which was the purpose of our meeting. But we also wanted to make sure that we got some information as far as our system development charges. Because we are going to make that decision or need to make that decision. What's February, next month, our next council meeting? Isn't that correct? Because we're not making the decision tonight.
I would hope you don't make it.
No, I, I don't plan on to.
So I think this is up to Barry now to explain.
All right, Mr. Byler. It is you are, you are on.
Okay. Uh, I've gone back through and looked at the systems development charges that we have for water and sewer. They're going to be, need to be updated. Uh, bringing what we brought in the resolution format, a draft resolution format, exhibit A. There's, there's last year's resolution two dash 2020. And it has exhibit A as it would probably look. When we passed the resolution, but I, in the draft resolution, I kind of put together the, Jackie helped me put together the different contractors that use the SDCs during the course of the year. Uh, we had two contractors, Riverwood Homes and Wood Hill Homes that took, got 10 sets of waivers. So both of those, those two contractors got down into the 60% level. And everybody else, Boardman Development did four and all of those were waived. And then there was a couple of others that had one or two. So. And so that. That's the extent of what they, the contractors using it. I expect that to go up a little bit. Uh, in the draft, I put what would be coming into the city and it matched up with the, the, the data spreadsheet that Heather had put together. So it, you know, math was done twice, but, and it come up with same figures all, all the way down the board. One of the questions that I have is do we really want to put that in the resolution? Or just show, show you what would come into the city? And then when we pass the resolution, have it be just what we waive like it was in two 2020.
So I guess the homework for the, for the council would be to study whether they want exhibit A at 90%, exhibit A at 100%. And I think those were the two that we talked about at the.
And you had the change to blocks of three instead of blocks of four, which is reflected in, in that.
You know, I'd like to point out because I never thought about it before until we started working on this. That if you go to the one, the one we've had previously where you did four at an increment. So the, the people that bought 10, that's, that's why we went and looked up who buys 10. Because if you were going to do 10 homes, you get the first four waived. And then you paid, you waived the next, you paid, you waived 7,000 of the next one. And then, so then you waived, you, you got two of the next. Anyway, if you take and decide how much those they paid and you divide it by 10, then it turns into a really sweetheart deal. And, and that's fine. I just think you need to, I never looked at it from the opposite side of how that worked. If you were, if you're, if you could do 10 homes at a time, because usually we were so excited if you could do four, that. Anyway, so.
So apparently that's something that Riverwood Homes and Wood Hill Homes figured out, is what you're saying.
I would think so. Well, and they were lucky that they could build 10 homes in Boardman in a year. You know, that's 20 of the 27 new homes that we built. So hooray. But, you know, it's just sometimes, you know, how the figures work. It just, whoever's doing the talking is how our figures work. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just for information purposes, we received on Thursday of last week, two additional applications for subdivisions. So one's for 51 lots at Tuscany and the other one is for 28 lots at Chaparral Park.
Are those individual homes, Barry?
Those will, yeah, they'll be mostly individual homes. It's a 51 lot subdivision.
Is that?
And another 28.
On the east side of the grocery store?
No.
Yeah, it's over on the other side of Trade Winds.
Mr. Beagle doesn't know where Trade Winds is.
No.
Mr. Byler?
The east, the east end of Oregon Trail.
Okay, okay, the under other side of Anderson, okay.
It's going to go, they're calling it, what is this?
Bailey, yeah.
What, Bay Shore or something like that?
Bailey, like, like.
Bailey Park.
Bailey Park?
Bailey Park. From George Bailey.
Yeah.
So we'd be, uh, council members be aware that we're probably going to be discussing this and trying to make a a motion to pass a resolution concerning this for the, and they're one-year resolutions. Is that correct?
That's the way it's all.
Yeah, we'll want to make it retroactive as well to go back to the beginning of the year.
Correct. Yeah, we'd make it retroactive. So we got some homework to do, have your, uh, do some studying on and find out what you think is the best for the city. And I probably would say what also would it help encourage, not to discourage builders to, for the purpose of what we have. We want to make sure that we're giving our builders an opportunity to make some money because it's always nice to, everybody's looking for the, the deals. But at the same time, I don't think it's, we should continue to give away everything as well. So that, that, what I, I guess that would be the homework. Was there anything else as far as the the SDC's resolution?
No.
Not, not for the res, not for the resolution. But one of the things that we'll be bringing back to you in the very near future is wanting to get the, oh, okay to go ahead and start finding a consultant to do the SDC studies for water, sewer and transportation.
Yes, that would, that's.
We can have it done by the time we get to next year.
Yes. Exactly. Very good. So these SDCs, so if I, I noticed that there were some of these individuals, are these individual homeowners who built a house who gets a, the SDC waiver if they build one of the four?
Yes. Well.
Does that, so I guess my question. Yes, Barry?
SDC, SDCs are a condition of getting building permits.
Okay.
They have to be paid before you get the building permits.
Right. So I see some individuals that aren't hired, highlighted. Are those just citizens who built a house?
Yeah, either that or a manufactured home.
Okay. So I guess my next question is, so the fire station is going to be built, would they fall under the one through three or one through four, not have to pay SDC charges?
For the, for the first four, they wouldn't have to pay. But for the, or for the first three, they wouldn't have to pay. But for the next three, they'd be, it, and I can't tell you what the calculation for what, how many equivalent dwelling units or EDUs that would be charged to the fire station.
Okay, so because their properties.
I have to figure out what their flow is relative to what is put in by a, an equivalent dwelling unit, which is a single family residential home.
Okay, that's what, okay. That's good information to know. Because these SDC charges are based off of single family dwelling homes.
Correct.
So if you had a business that came in, then they, they would have system developed charges that would be waived according to the number of use?
It, well, it's, it's a combination of, of how much time is it operated? Uh, how many employees? It's things like that is to figure out how to make that equivalency with the EDU.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else on the system development waivers, let's head on to the building department discussion.
We did that.
Okay, that takes care of that. I do believe that we had a council business. Are we ready for that?
Okay.
Mr. Beagle? Yeah, it's your turn.
I think I'll wait and bring this up at another time until I can present in writing what I propose to do.
Okay, that, no problem.
That way, when I'm talking about it, everybody has it in front of them and they, they can follow along.
Okay, that would, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody else have any other business that they would like to share at this time? All right, having hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting.
Karen, were they going to do the, the video?
Did you want?
No, does everyone, do you want to watch your video till nine or, or till 8:30?
Uh, about what?
While you're a counselor.
It was, I believe, the leader of Oregon City.
I didn't think we were going to do that tonight because we were just going to have an hour meeting.
Yeah.
She had mentioned in our last meeting that we had the possibility of watching it in sections.
I don't, I, I think we should be done at eight o'clock tonight.
Okay, sounds great to me.
All right. So I adjourn the meeting. Thank you. All right, so I adjourn the meeting, thank you.